Good evening.
Hello.
Calling to order, the Town of Corder Madara Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, March 26, 2019. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Wolf, will you call us in?
Absolutely. Let's see. Commissioner Metcalf.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy. Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Vandell.
Here.
And the record will show that Commissioner Bundy is absent this evening.
Thank you. At this time in the meeting, we open the meeting to public comment for something that is not on the agenda tonight. If so, you have three minutes to say your piece. If so, please stand up and approach the microphone and identify yourself if possible. So, this is for something that is not on tonight's agenda. Okay? So, we have no takers. All right. Thank you. So, we'll close that public comment section and we'll go directly to our first continued hearing tonight, which is for 159 Prince Royal Drive. This is a continued public hearing for consideration and possible approval of a landscaping plan pursuant to the conditions of approval of Town Council Resolution Number 26/2017 related to the conditionally approved major remodel and home addition at 159 Prince Royal Drive. Mr. Wolf.
Commissioner, Chair.
Oh, yes.
I'm going to recuse myself as I am a direct neighbor of that property.
We'll see you in a fur bit. All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chairman Chase. Sorry, Chairman Chase, Commissioners. As you just mentioned, this is a continued public hearing. The Planning Commission, at its February 12, 2019, meeting reviewed a first draft, as it were, of a landscape plan that was intended to comply and gain the approval of the Planning Commission to be in compliance with the Council Resolution that was approved in 2017 related to the major remodel and addition to the existing single-family home at 159 Prince Royal Drive. I'm not going to go through all of the background that I did at the last meeting related to this project. I do want to note that I have that staff report as an attachment one to tonight's staff report for reference. And I have many of the slides, if not all of the slides, that we went through last time as well. If the Commission so desires, I can walk through that for reference as well. I do want to mention, at the February 12, 2019, meeting, the Planning Commission had some discussion regarding the adequacy of the plans that were provided that evening to review. The Commission made a motion at the end of the deliberation section of the hearing and requested that the applicant return to the Planning Commission and provide updated revised landscape plans with more information and some enhancements to the plan. Those specific requests are outlined in your staff report on page one. They're bulleted there for your reference. And in addition, they're in the draft minutes this evening at the back of the packet for your review as well. But essentially, there was some specific things that I think the Commission, at the end of the day, came down and said, requested some site sections, planting details, given the steepness of the slopes of the lot, really a complete site plan. It wasn't completed at the last meeting because they didn't extend all the way out to the curb or the sidewalk. And additionally, there was a request for some additional trees to be planted in consultation with the town arborist, if possible. And additional information regarding ground cover, filling that out, and if possible, some imagery would have was requested as well. So, in Attachment Three of your staff report, the applicant has provided revised landscape plans and at the request, and is attempting to provide the information that was requested by the Planning Commission. Mr. Galen Foltz, I believe, is in the audience this evening and will be able to answer your questions, any questions that you have, related to the planting plans and landscape plans that have been provided. I did also, we do not have this evening with us, Kent Julin, but I did provide an attachment for, make sure that he has reviewed the plans that were submitted and has effectively approved them as required by the conditions of approval, and that they've also been reviewed by the Fire Marshal as well, Ruben Martin, as that was part of the discussion we had at the last meeting, so that there should not be any concerns that these do not meet the standards of the town regarding fire safety, that they have been reviewed to make sure that they are adequate and meet the town's requirements. All of the other things that we had in the staff report before, there is still a vegetation management plan. There are a lot of additional requirements in Mr. Julin's arborist report that would be ongoing requirements, those that have been included in the draft resolution, if you so choose to approve the landscape plan. Draft resolution has been provided in Attachment One for your review. And I'm happy to go through any of this material in more detail for you this evening. And with that, there are options again for you in the staff report numbered one through four, including everything from Option One, which would be to approve the draft resolution as included in your packet this evening, make some modifications, if you so desire, to that resolution to make it approvable, or determine that the findings cannot be met and continue the meeting with some additional requests, or Number Four would be to determine that the findings can't be met and direct staff to provide a comeback to the Commission with a resolution for denial. With that, I guess there is also one public comment. I did want to mention that I did get some correspondence from the neighbor at 163 Prince Royal Drive. There was sort of two aspects to this comment, which was, one was related to the potential view blockage of proposed olive tree or some other trees in the front of the house. And that request, I actually was communicated with the homeowners and then had an opportunity yesterday to go out and visit with the homeowner at 163 Prince Royal Drive in View and sort of just make, we laid out the plans and I walked through actually where the new trees were going to be, the ones that were going to be retained, and the ones that were going to be planted, where the new olive tree was going to be planted. And I think, I think perhaps the homeowner is here this, yes, he is, so he may want to speak to this himself, but I think we clarified that the new olive tree was actually more toward the front of the house. If planted, it would sort of more block the other houses across the street rather than any views. And so, I think that was a helpful clarification. The second part of this related more, again, to these questions about retaining walls. And I again explained that those pieces of the project would come in with the building permit submittal when that is ready to be submitted. And at that time, we would be sure to reach out to the homeowner at 163, the homeowners there, and make sure that they invite them in and come and walk through, after we've had a chance to review them, walk through those plans, make sure they understood specifically the structural engineering, the CALCS, all the things that have been reviewed by, you know, our experts in our Public Works Department, structural engineers and so forth, and our building official as well. So, I did that. I do have slides. I guess I can explain a little bit about the differences to the plan and I'll go straight to, straight to some of the documents here. So, this was the last time you saw the site plan, the landscaping plan. The difference here, there's much, many more planting, ground cover, shrubberies sort of on the plan here. It's also extended out to the curb. I'm trying to see if I can get this thing working. No, it doesn't seem to want to work. Okay. There is some ficus on one of the western-facing retaining wall now proposed, some ground cover there. There's additional trees that were requested. So, now there's three arbuthist marina trees on the western slopes and three of the potocarpus trees on the northern side of the site plan. Just, just don't worry. And in front, there's additional trees to remain, which I think actually are one of the requests that were made, not specifically in the motion, but were done because they were in consultation with the town arborist. They were deemed that they could stay and not pose any sort of fire risk. So, in addition to the two oak trees that are on the western slopes, an existing plum tree that is fairly large and mature would remain, as well as this loris tree in the front of the property. And I have some pictures that I think can try to help show that. And then, the one yucca tree at the front of the driveway would remain as well. And then, if, when I go back to the picture, you'll see there's an existing palm that would be removed and in its place would be the olive tree essentially at the front of the driveway. So, there's the sort of the blooming plum on the right there. I wish I could get some of this. Actually, I want to. This is the plum. This is the loris, which is, I believe, an evergreen tree. And then, the two oaks over on this side. So, some, even with the removal of the, obviously, the large pine trees, there would still be some existing trees that would remain that I think would also provide some screening while the other trees that are going to be planted will sort of grow over the years. And I will leave it there and am available for any questions that you may have. I'll put my mic back in the.
Phyllis, do you have any questions for us, Dave?
No questions at this time.
I have one question. So, when it comes to views and trees within the town, within the town ordinance, if a tree grows within a view corridor, can it be requested to be cut down or not trimmed back, right? I know that in other communities nearby, that is a.
We do, so we, yes, and we do have a provision in our municipal code, it's 15, I want to say 15, 15-100 of the municipal code, that talks about view preservation specifically for vegetation. And I think actually this came up as we were talking about the 78 Granada application, I think, at the last meeting. It is, relates specifically to vegetation growing. And so, essentially, what it is, is that if there are several requirements or pieces of information that are brought to the table, and essentially, the code and ordinance lays out a process by which neighbors should follow or could follow, and it's really not something that the town gets involved in, but it does lay out essentially a procedure and a process and a right to claims, at least in the town of Corder Madara, and a process to follow to resolve those issues between neighbors and ultimately, you know, getting into mediation and arbitration eventually, if necessary. And we do see that actually being utilized. We have a couple of active, I would say, call them cases that are, that private property owners are using currently in the town to address, to address those tree issues.
There is a mechanism to make sure that that's.
Yes, yes.
To handle properly.
There is. And I think, I think it's, yes, and I think it's, you know, I think it's helpful. We don't always, aren't always aware of the results, but I think we do get questions about it frequently and how they can resolve those things.
Thank you.
Sure.
That's all.
Okay. In your staff report regarding the Town Council Resolution to address Mr. Lee's comment or question, the height of vegetation in this case was set at a plane of 20 feet above the level of the existing driveway.
Yeah, this is, this would have actually entirely, a different mechanism to address that issue, which would be town-controlled, yeah, or town-involved, would be very much involved in that process.
So, if I may take a moment, just to clarify a couple of things, that this was one of several conditions to be satisfied, placed upon the building application, or approval of the Planning Commission application. One was the site grading and landscape plan. And then, you guys have to receive a full building permit set that will include soils reports and structural details.
Correct. All, yes.
That said, this plan shows retaining walls on them figuratively.
Right.
And that they are not considered approved as a building construction element until such a time as the building permit is reviewed and approved.
That's correct. I mean, generally, what we'll see in a submittal for landscaping at the time of planning, review, and entitlement is for the purposes of planning only. When we get into retaining walls, that will, these will likely, and it's the way they're represented here in terms of their size and what they'll be retaining, will very likely require building permits and structural details in order to ensure that they are stabilizing and retaining the dirt behind them. So, as, when we get the building permit application, we would expect to have those included as part of that. And if not, we would, we could, would certainly request that. But if there's questions about that, that's certainly something the Planning Commission could also add on to ensure that that is done because it's reviewing this particular landscape plan at this time.
Right. And as the structural plan might impact the planting plan, it could be revised at the time of submission if the structural plans or the building plans impacted this landscaping.
It all, yes, it does all work together. I, you know, so, those would be reviewed at that time. I don't see anything that would necessarily preclude the planting plan from being carried through as of right now, but as you say, when they get into the structural details of that, there's potential for some things to be modified, but not, I wouldn't expect significant changes in terms of like the tree plantings or whatnot, but there may be some of the shrubbery and whatnot maybe different.
All right. Thank you. Anything else before we ask for applicant presentation? So, who's going to speak, if anybody, for the applicant tonight on this presentation?
You can step up to the mic. You just said.
Yes, I'm Galen Foltz, the landscape designer, and I can answer any questions if they're anything in particular.
So, there's questions that we might have, but do you have anything you would add to the transition of this plan?
No, other than, you know, every effort has been made on my part to satisfy the questions and the things that were brought up in the last meeting. I wasn't here for that meeting, but the ground cover, that was one of the issues that came up. You know, as, the whole thing has kind of evolved over this last couple of years, and so there's been different changes with the concern for fire, reduction of the amount of trees and moving the trees, along with meeting requirements for the vegetation management plan. Part of that is not having kind of spacing plants out. And so, in the iteration that was presented last month, I had plants more open and spaced out. The concern was, you know, what's going to retain the soil. In certain instances, more typically, like the application of gorilla hair, the shredded redwood mulch, which, you know, is a fire problem. So, that, there would be no mulch placed. There was some mention of like doing some sort of grass, but the problem with doing like a grass that's like a seasonal sort of thing is that it would die down and it would require more irrigation. So, what I came up with was the planting of a very low ground cover, Rubus calcinoides, that's deer-resistant and fire-resistant. There's a picture of it there somewhere. Yeah, on the number 15? And it's a great ground cover. What's nice is you plant it, run a dripper to it, and then it spreads out like at least five feet. So, you get a lot of coverage from, you know, just applying irrigation at one spot. So, I thought it was a good, and it stays like a foot or less, looks natural. And I came, I thought that that was like the best solution to covering the ground with the initial, after getting everything planted, putting down a jute erosion netting and that stapled down, that lasts like a couple of years and then eventually just decomposes. And that could have some compost put over it to just sort of kind of soften the look of it so it doesn't look as, you know, sort of, I don't know, the netting by itself isn't that attractive. So, it would soften the look of that.
Better than a highway cut, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's helpful to hear your discourse on that. Commissioners, do you have any questions for this gentleman? Phyllis?
Are you contemplating doing a soil study before?
No.
You feel the soil.
Didn't see the necessity of it.
Why not?
For what purpose?
Well, we were concerned about the condition of the soil.
If I may interrupt, there's two issues. One is the deeper stability for structural elements.
Yeah.
And then, there's the surface soil. And in a way, he's addressing the.
Just the surface, so, okay.
Yeah.
And I was concerned about the under.
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, it's just what he mentioned, that, you know, in terms of the soil, in terms of soil engineering and retaining walls and those concerns.
And deep root trees is what I was thinking of, which go far, could go far below the surfaces they grow.
Yeah. Well, in the planting details outlines how those would be planted, I don't see any problems with planting trees or those trees being a problem in terms of the soil.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I just ever mention that I think Kent Julin actually spoke to that at the last meeting regarding the tree planting and whether there would be soil issues with the removal of the existing trees and then planting new ones.
Yeah, I'd ask him about whether they had taproots and that type of thing. So, I asked him about taproots and he said he didn't feel that that was going to be an issue, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I think that's our questions.
Okay.
So, thank you. And now, we will ask for public comment on this application. If anyone else, unless someone is going to speak for the applicant, but otherwise, it's public comment time. So, you have three minutes if you're going to comment. Phyllis? Margaret or Phyllis, please, step up.
Margaret Vandell, 180 Prince Royal Drive. Two things. One, I want to draw your attention again to the letter that the owners of 163 right next door to this property wrote. She couldn't be here today. And these people have pretty much, you know, given up their view and given up their everything for this new project that's being built. And I think the immediacy and the, just the wording of the letter shows how really important it is that this body take their concerns really seriously. So, I just want to again draw your attention to those concerns. The second concern I have is I would like very much, if you have a resolution for this plan, to put in that resolution some wording about how the trees must remain at a certain height without going through the arbitration and the mediation concerns because that height was part of the agreement of the original resolution when it was passed, and it was meant to preserve a piece of my view, which was being cut off by a three-story building.
Thank you, Margaret.
Hello, I'm Phyllis Galanis, and my husband and I live at 215 Prince Royal Drive, so we're also affected by this project. I too wanted to speak some to what Tamila did write. It's not just the plantings. When you have plantings going, the trees are going to mature 25 to 30 feet tall, that will definitely impact their view. But the other is the retaining walls. You need to look at the property where you're building those retaining walls up by the house, not so much the ADU, but up by the main structure that they're wanting to remodel and make a three-story building because they're so close to, they will be on the property line. And those are going to affect the, the structure of the house at 163. So, it's not, it's not something to look at just cursorly. It's, you've got to really examine that property and look at what the impact is going to be on that house next door. You know me, I've talked probably ad nauseam about the stability of the hillside. I am really concerned about that. We learned years ago, the toe of the hillside had already been compromised. Now, when you talk about doing something more on our, on the steep part of our hillside, that is very concerning for all of us who live on that hillside. So, it's not just a matter of getting a nice landscape design that will hopefully look nice, will have, will take care of the water, of the drainage problem because, Peter, you brought that up at the last meeting, and you're absolutely right. Our hillside is eroding. We did get heavy rains this year. We are not in a drought anymore. That means we'll be getting more. And the earth is moving. It's moved on the hillside across, the part of the hillside across the street from us, and I noticed a part of it moving on our own property. So, this is something that you really do need to do that soil stability test with an independent contractor to look at what's going to happen with the three-story house and the addition of the ADU actually on the downslope. I can't emphasize enough what Tamila and Hooch are going through in their anxiety about what you all are, looks like you may allow for the construction right next to their property that would also undermine it. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis. Anyone else wish to speak to this application? All right, seeing none, then we'll bring it back up here to the dais. We'll close the public comment section of this agenda item. Mr. Lee, so we have before us really is a. Mr. Lee, so we have before us really is a landscape plan that is just about the plants and trees on the lot.
Yep.
And have you studied it and what's your-
I have studied it, and, you know, I think, once again, in this application, we did request some additional material. I'm really happy to see it, because we did hear issues about, and I had concerns about stability, based on the last plan, the amount of information. So I think this new information is really informative and gives me a lot more confidence about that. I think the next day, there was an incident in Sausalito, and it made me just think how present this real discussion is, and how serious I really do take it, and how happy I am when I get information that makes me feel like the decisions I'm going to make, you know, have real impact and have bettered the community for safety, right? So in reviewing that, I feel like I'm much more confident in making that decision. And I hear other comments about the walls and soil and everything, and I hear the staff saying that those will be available and that that will be a diligence that's done after the fact. But just to be clear, in these findings, that is not what I personally understand tonight that we're making a decision on, and so therefore, I cannot consider that. And I just want to state that. But within those, I really appreciate the mixture of different events that could happen on, you know, there's stability, there's fire, there's drought tolerance, and I really appreciate you taking all those in and coming up with a plan that's really considerate. And, you know, I even requested this, you know, just a little elevation, some kind of rendering of all the plants on the site. And I think, you know, that one, I think, is really nice for the community to look at. It's a beautiful improvement to what is now kind of an unkept, ratty-looking area with those pine trees and everything, and I think that that's a really nice addition to this application, and why I requested it, and think it's good to put it in every one of the landscaping applications. So on, you know, but to get to the crux of it, I can make the findings tonight and move this landscaping plan forward, so they can continue the process of the overall permitting and everything, so.
Thank you, Charles, I appreciate that. Phyllis?
If we're just looking at the landscaping, I can make the findings. The problem with this application, and Charles hit on it a little bit, this has gone on for two years in the most piecemeal fashion of any application I think we have ever had before us. And when you look at just a section here and a section there, you don't have a complete picture. I am concerned about the soil condition. When you and I went to look at this almost two years ago, for the original application for the three-story house, we looked at that retaining wall between the neighbor at 163 and the applicant. And you know far more about construction than I do, I know the architecture and design part of it, were very concerned about the stability of that wall. As a matter of fact, the applicant was very annoyed that it was even brought up. And if that wall is going to be rebuilt, we have to think about where it is rebuilt, because this neighbor at 163 has made it extremely clear in several sentences from several angles, none of it's going to be on my property, no way, no how. And here we are. If that retaining wall has to be moved, it changes, could change the landscape plan and what's done. And this is, as I say, my objection. I think this is a very lovely landscape plan, and I can vote for it. But we keep on digging a hole deeper and deeper by, and not the right kind of hole, because we keep on doing pieces here and pieces there. And I think it's unfair to us, it's unfair to the community, and it's unfair to the applicant. And I'm sure after this, the applicants will be writing another nasty letter about me to the council, what they're used to it from this applicant. But I really don't want to see this, whether it's the staff or the applicant coming to us with piecemeal things that could be changed later, and we have to keep on going back and forth.
Thank you, Phyllis. I understand your commentary, and I think those are points to bear in mind for the future, yeah. So I think that, among other things, before I remind ourselves of a couple of things, the existing resolution calls out the height at which the trees have to be kept. So that's something that can be enforced by the planning department, to walk out and say, this is too high, you need to cut it. Is that correct?
Yes, and in fact, one of the, one of the things that Kent Julen or town arborist, or consultant arborist did as well, was make a recommendation as to when the first reports should be done. As you may recall, we went through sort of a discussion of the heights of the trees, where the elevations would be where they're planted, and that, what the maturity of the heights in which they would grow. And only a couple of the trees, it was noted, would, at full maturity, would maybe, would be potentially go into that imaginary plane, which I think is 20 feet above the level of the driveway. As a result, he's recommending, and this is, this is obviously an unusual requirement to some, in some ways, but in 10 years or so, the first check would happen, about 2030, we'd get the arborist, paid for by the homeowners at 159 Prince Royal, would have to make a report on the height of those trees at that time, evaluate whether or not they go into that imaginary plane, which they cannot penetrate above, and then make a recommendation on that report about ongoing compliance and how to maintain that requirement going forward. It is, that was one of the reasons we wanted to have the town arborist involved at the stage of, well, pursuant to the conditions of approval, that they would look at it. So that's how that would be maintained. And there are specific, it's spelled out in the resolution under finding number three in the draft resolution, that's laid out and explaining how that finding would be made. And then it is also laid out specifically with respect to, because we've been focused predominantly with the pine trees, but there are two cypress trees as well between 159 and 163 Prince Royal, which were also part of that requirement, that they get a sort of, no higher than that imaginary plane, which is sort of around the existing roof height of the existing two-story structure on, at 159 Prince Royal. We talked about that actually yesterday when I was on site with Hoochang, and that those would also have to be trimmed currently in an ongoing basis as well. So those are built into, I want to make clear, those are built in, they were built into the prior council approval in 2017. And I think now, they've been elaborated with the information that we have from the town arborist or the consultant arborist on this, Kent Julen, about how actually to carry that out. And so I feel that we have those, that in place, a process and procedure in place to make sure that that is adhered to.
So within that process, there's no mediation or arbitration, just to-
Correct, that's just a strict-
Report, and either you comply or you don't. If you don't comply, you have to comply.
Yes.
That was the approval.
Yeah, and the town can take actions to necessitate that. Right. So that's that. Now, on the plan that we have before us, and the commentary about the European non-fruing olive that goes at the end of the driveway, and it would be probably the possible, possibly the newest and tallest tree that might grow on that lot. And that would take any number of years to get there. I would submit that one condition would be that we determine a pruning date for that tree, so that it grows like olives trees grow that are meant for harvesting. So I have seen olive trees that are a couple thousand years old, that are only 15 feet tall, and that they can be trimmed in that manner.
I would, just to that point, in terms of, that was one of the things that we wanted to discuss yesterday, was where that olive tree was located in relationship to some of the windows facing out west in the neighborhood, 163 Prince Royal. And so I did, because the other trees are, you know, I did have this photo, and if, before I say, is that okay? All right. So you can see the plum tree, which is the one that was going to remain, which is flowering right now in this image. The pine trees actually, above and to the right, are going to be removed, so actually some of the ridge lines behind that will be opened up. But the olive tree is actually left, and I didn't, I may not have other, but it's actually to the left of this image, and really, sort of, not from a view where you would look at a ridge, but more of the other houses that are up slope of it. So I'm happy to do that, whatever, but I just, I think that was agreed also, just explaining that to the property owner, that there wasn't necessarily an issue with that particular tree. I think there was a concern that it was actually, the olive trees would be on the, in between the driveway and the property line, like right in front of this fence, that that's where they were going to be planted, and that, I think it clarified that that was not the case. What was, what's going to be there are going to be lower, lower plants and shrubs there.
Very good. So then, with the removal of some of these trees that are on the site, the views will actually be opened up to some extent, then?
From particular angles, yeah, from, for like, this particular angle. But obviously, there's the structure and other angles that will take away some of that.
I just wanted to say then, that where this project started with a landscaping plan that left virtually everything on the hillside, to where it is now, where it is fire-safe, and it has plantings that will add to the beauty of the property, it will add to diminishing the overall height of the project by lower growth and so forth. I think that the distance that they've come from no change to this plan is significant, and it helps the property. All these issues about soil that everybody's concerned about, that will come up before the planning and building department. All the issues of retaining walls will be reviewed by the building and planning department. This is not about those issues. But I will say that I would like to condition it such that if the retaining wall plan changes from what's presented in this plan, that there needs to be a, either a staff review or a commission review of a new plan, right? If anything changes, once they understand their own structural systems, that may change topography, et cetera, of this lot. I don't know.
But in that, is it that it's a re-review of the landscaping plan, or?
It may impact the landscaping, but I don't know.
But the other one as well, is what, is that the building plan, is that what you're getting at, just to clarify?
They haven't submitted, so we don't know what the structural systems are for that house. So they have to decide that, and it may impact this. We don't know.
And that's always the case that the staff goes through in its reviews of projects. If they differ, there's, there's different levels of whether something is substantially compliant for all the way through, needing full review again by the planning commission. And we've seen those different levels at times, and if they're, you know, I think that's what happened even back in 2017, the specific request was made, that if there are specific, for example, the foundation, if the foundation changes, that needs to be, you just, I think you were highlighting specific things to be very closely watching and carefully paying attention to it from a staff level review, or staff review when the building permits are submitted. So we do that, but if there are specific processes that you would like to follow that are, as I said, it's sometimes a substantive, it can be from staff level to the planning commission, then you can make those specific requirements as part of your resolution. However, I would note, just from a, from the practically speaking, you know, there's almost always some change to a landscaping plan that is detailed, as planting a shrub on center every four feet. We're not going out there and measuring, so, you know, we've had plenty of houses where it's not a, we're not getting to that level, and there's obviously some changes that happen. So I'd hope there's some room for, obviously not substantive changes to a landscaping plan, but like, if they're, you know, counting how many, they have 25 one gallon, you know, number 13s, and they go 28 on that one, but 22 on another, that it's a little, you know, there's, I hope there's some flexibility there.
There's always the flexibility. Ms. Prop, you have something you want to-
Just for clarification, and maybe it would help the commission, if you're thinking of crafting an additional condition, is the town council resolution, which is binding for this project, with respect to the foundation work, had a condition that, that might help you craft a condition in this landscape issue. And it basically provides that, at the time of the building permit submitted for any foundation work, the planning department shall review the plans for compliance with the approved plan set and the approved scope of work. Any changes to the approved plans may require a permit amendment, and at the discretion of the planning director. And the director can either issue the permit amendment or refer it back to the planning commission for further review. So you certainly could craft a similar condition with respect to the landscape plans, that if there are any changes or something like that, that can be referred to the planning staff and for review and, you know, try and set. But it's always the discretion of the planning director to refer it back to the planning commission.
Got it, all right. It does, thank you. Phyllis?
Actually, Judith answered my questions, because I wondered what would be the trigger, and you kind of referred to it.
So with that said, I, the only condition that I would be interested in ensuring is complied with, is that if the building construction alters this landscape plan in a manner that the planning director deems significant, that it be brought, he will make a decision whether to bring it back to us for review.
I would, you said building construction, I would say building construction and retaining walls.
It is, yes.
I know it's part of it, but I think sometimes it has to be clarified.
Building permit and with retaining wall permits, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're structural. So that said, would either of you make a motion for this approval, because I would find the plan acceptable as well?
So just to be clear though, with the olive tree, now that there's been a site visit and it's been clarified, the pruning, you wouldn't want that as one of the conditions?
I think that the condition is set in the application, we don't need to additionally condition it, you know?
Just to clarify, because you'd mentioned an interest in that.
Right.
It still, it still has the-
It's going to be 30 years before it gets there.
The baseline condition of approval on that.
I'll defer to the vice chair.
Vice chair?
Would you care to endeavor to make a motion to approve?
Oh, I was hoping that Charles would do it. How's that for passing the book? Actually, I was looking at this, and before we approve any resolution, the resolution that's attached has the wrong dates. It says that it's being adopted on the 12th of February with the appeal, that's what I was reading while you two were talking.
You're right, no, I, that's a good catch.
You didn't update it.
On the header, on the bar at the top, it should, should say, I updated the rest of it, but it should say March, obviously, that adoption date, March 26th, and appeal period ends, what would that be?
April 5th?
Yep, starting tomorrow.
The 5th?
Yeah, the 5th.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I was going through this, looking to see if there was a more updated one, but there wasn't.
The text itself, I did go through to update it, so you'll see the plans-
You promise?
In sort of addition, yes. If you look at a condition of approval number one, it has the March 14th and March 21st plans, plan set date.
Okay. I'll attempt it. Hey, you're going to have to do your due diligence, Charles. Okay. I move the approval of resolution 19006, in the matter of review of revisions to the landscape and site plan at 159 Prince Royal Drive, and a determination regarding whether the findings of approval for the previous approved design review application, PL 2016-00- review application, PL two zero one six dash zero 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 seven, can continue to be met pursuant to condition of approval number five of Corder Madera Town Council Resolution number two six slash two oh one seven, with the following condition added. And Peter, I would like you to say that wording, since it was your, you kind of put into
Condition would be such that should the building and landscape wall plan impact the landscape plan, as in any significance, the planning director would choose the appropriate notice or adjudication.
Okay. Judith, when you read the council resolution to us, and you were quoting, when changes would be made from their resolution?
Sure. Changes would be reviewed by the planning director, and it would be the planning director's discretion whether to issue a permit amendment or to refer the matter back to planning commission.
Is that a numbered condition?
It's number seven in the town council.
Okay. I think we should state that. Well, not only you say, in accordance with condition seven of the council.
And that was referred to for the, for the foundation, for the buildings, so you could, as part of your motion, use that as a basis for that you would like a similar condition be drafted for the landscaping, for the landscape plan.
Should the landscape plan modify, be modified by the building and retaining wall plan, dot, dot, dot?
That sounds fantastic. I second the motion. Commissioner Ali?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mekev?
Aye.
Chairman Chase?
Aye.
Some rights to be read here.
The action taken by the planning commission at a public hearing or meeting, any decision of the planning commission may be appealed to the town council within ten calendar days. Appeal forms are available at the planning department, Corder Madera Town Hall. A three hundred dollar filing fee is required.
All right. Thank you very much. Now on to what I suspect most people are here tonight.
Since this is going to be a long one, could we take a five-minute break before we start?
Till eight o'clock.
Thank you.
All right. We'll re, we'll reassume at eight o'clock. Thank you. Issues, we're going to resume the meeting. Thank you for being patient. So it's taken a little bit, but we have fresh batteries and new equipment, so, thank you. So our next item is titled, "Consideration of Amendments to the Town of Corder Madera Municipal Code Title Six, Nine, Eight, and Eighteen Regarding Regulation of Cannabis-Related Businesses and Personal Cultivation." So this is a ratification, or a commentary, or a recommendation to the town council of something that has been put forth to date. And Mr. Boyle will explain it. And I just think that, we've had public study sessions, we've made a recommendation to the town council. The town council considered it and has put forth this document for us to review and decide whether we want to recommend, recommend it, or not recommend it, or there are options that Mr. Boyle has put on the table for us, it's in the staff report. But essentially, we have before us a draft resolution recommending approval of what the town council has put forth, and there are options for that, but I'm going to let Mr. Boyle explain the long process by which we got here. This is not something that we're drafting tonight, we're not considering something new. This is, that's how we say, old business. And the paperwork is available, and he's going to explain it here for everyone. So thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Chase, members of the commission. First, I want to bring your attention and to the attention of the public, the items at your places. The first item is our comments that the town has received after the packet has been distributed. So each one of you have that packet of, of own comments, and that is also in the back, on the back table. In addition to that, Chairperson Chase provided staff with a variety of different materials, and that's found at the, the left of the dais here on my left, for your review. And also, there is, that packet also exists in the back table. I will also just clarify that a number of, back to this packet, a number of the comments in this packet you received via email. But even if you receive them via email, I produced them in hard copy, and again, they're, they're available on the back. If additional copies are needed, please let us know.
And I will just clarify that in the documents that I provided, they are really thoughts about cannabis and marijuana in general, they're not specific to this ordinance, and I, they are informative of status of testing and cannabis regulation. So they're not about ordinances particularly, they're not about anything that we have before us so specifically, other than cannabis, CBD, and THC in and of itself. So that said, please.
Thank you. And I actually just went ahead and jumped ahead to slide number seven, just to give people at home, or even on your tablets, if you want to see what's happened in the past, please go on to the cannabis ordinance website at the town of Corder Madera. There you will find previous staff minutes, staff reports, I'm sorry, meeting minutes, staff reports, link to the public opinion survey, public survey results, the public workshops, videos of the public workshops, as well as links to state and county resources, and also staff contact information. So, jumping back to slide number one. An overview of the process that we have undertaken to date, going way back to the, the late nineties and the early two thousands, as spelled out in page one and page two of the staff report, when the state of California passed a variety of different pieces of legislation and propositions for the legalization of medicinal and non-medicinal, or often now referred to as adult-use cannabis. Things kind of came to a head in terms of action that the town of Corder Madera needed to take, as well as municipalities throughout the state. And when the state of California stated that come January of two thousand eighteen, if a jurisdiction had not either prohibited or created their own ordinance and their own rules regarding cannabis, then that jurisdiction, or the state could start issuing licenses to that jurisdiction regarding cannabis-related businesses and other activities. So knowing that, Corder Madera, again, is along, along with many other jurisdictions, we implemented a moratorium that basically put a hold on any cannabis activity. The first one was a forty-five-day urgency ordinance. The second one was a year-long extension of that, and the third one was another extension of that. And so that, extension of that urgency ordinance goes until September of this year, when that urgency ordinance will expire. So that's kind of our timeline, and, so with that, we began this process back in the September of last year, when we held two public workshops in September. And I'll just briefly go through the process and give a little bit more detail on that. So we hold two public workshops, we also launched the online public survey, asking individuals on, on their own behalf to, if they wish to, go online anonymously, input their information, and answer questions if they so see fit regarding their opinions about cannabis uses, how they voted on particular measures in the past, demographics, and a variety of other things. And again, those are, the results, the brief summary of that survey is attached in the staff report, which is attachment four, which is the staff report that went before the town council back in December. And again, much more detailed information on the town's website. So that's the online public survey. Following that, or kind of in the middle of that, we brought the results of the survey to date, the summary of the workshops, to this body, the planning commission, back in October of two thousand eighteen, and gave an overview on what we had learned, and sought the direction of this commission. And the direction of the commission, again, is summarized in the staff report from December to the town council. General consensus of the commission was that the town should allow indoor cultivation as required by the state without additional regulations, and should allow businesses located outside the town to deliver cannabis to Corder Madera locations, but not have a delivery business located physically in the jurisdiction of Corder Madera. So again, the general consensus from the commission at that point was no to cannabis-related businesses within our jurisdiction, yes to indoor cultivation, and there was some discussion regarding outdoor cultivation by this body back in October. Secondly, our next step was to go before the town council in December, gave a similar presentation to them, gave them the, the comments from the planning commission, and I'll go into a little bit more detail what the council said back in December. Again, with the goal of adopting this ordinance by September of this year, two thousand nineteen. So just briefly, back to the public opinion survey, again, went from September to November. It was publicized in the newsletter, the reader board, our next door. As of November, we had four hundred and nine surveys completed. Eighty-one percent of them identified themselves as residents of Corder Madera, and examples of the results are in the staff report, as I mentioned before. Brief summary of the, of the two workshops, again, on Wednesday and Saturday in September, we had, at one time, we had twenty, first workshop, we had twenty-three attendees, second one, we had sixteen, majority of them were Corder Madera residents. We had Michael Norton from the Central Marin Police Authority speak and give his opinion and his insight into cannabis. We had presentations by staff, questions and answers, and a quite lively discussion in both of the workshops. Many opinions were expressed on a variety of different issues regarding cannabis. We had parents, we had individuals from the medical, medical industry, we had individuals from the cannabis industry, physicians, and many, many folks. Again, the workshops were videoed, there were handouts, and staff reports, and so on. So that's the brief summary of the two workshops. And now, the process to date is, after going to the town council on December, the town council directed staff to develop a draft ordinance based upon the information we've gathered over the last six months or so. And the council requested that the ordinance state that the town of Corder Madera prohibits cannabis-related businesses within the town. With the, and also, they will allow legal deliveries of cannabis products to authorize and license business by authorized and licensed businesses outside of Corder Madera. So basically, a licensed delivery person, delivery entity that exists not in this, the town of Corder Madera, can deliver the product to Corder Madera. Council also directed staff to develop regulations for the location and visibility of personal outdoor cultivation in residential zones. And the council directed staff not to add additional requirements for indoor personal cultivation beyond what the state already requires. Council did direct staff, and part of your staff report is directed staff to provide a handout with guidelines of how to safely and efficiently create an indoor personal cultivation area, if one wanted to do that in your home, just as a guideline, but not as any particular requirements. Again, summarizing the ordinance that's before you, somewhat repetitious, but again, prohibiting cannabis-related businesses, allowing certain deliveries, and specific regarding outdoor cultivation, per the state, the maximum number of plants one can have for, again, personal outdoor cultivation, it cannot be sold, is six plants. We determined based on feedback from the council and the citizens, that the cultivation area must be five feet from any property line, and cannot be within the front, or, front or street-side setbacks.
It's ten feet.
Sorry, ten feet. Did I say, sorry, ten feet. Plants can also not be visible from public spaces at the street level with the unaided eye. So no taking your ladder in the middle of the street with your binoculars. It does not, the ordinance does, again, does not require any additional indoor permits or requirements or process that one has to go through to create their indoor personal cultivation area. Again, state law does not allow the town to prohibit indoor cultivation. It only allows us to prohibit or limit outdoor cultivation. And I already mentioned the guidelines. And again, the cannabis webpage. So the commission's options for this evening, per the direction of the council, are to forward a recommendation of approval of the attached, which is in the attached resolution of the ordinance as presented, make changes to that ordinance, and forward a recommendation to the council, or request that staff revise the ordinance and bring it back for additional review. So that concludes my presentation, and I'll answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Phyllis, do you have any questions?
Ah, yes. The outside dispensaries that will be delivering to Corder Madera, will they in some way have to register with the town, so the town is aware of who is coming in to make deliveries? And should they?
So state law currently, the interpretation indicates that the town can't regulate outside businesses. It's not necessarily a dispensary, it could be some other type of business. But they have to be licensed by the state, so it's not within the town's purview to, unless we're going to allow for businesses within the town that would be registered and licensed and things like that, outside businesses under the state law are permitted to do deliveries in, into the town.
But how do we know they are registered or licensed with the state? That's why I'm asking if we should be aware of who is coming in.
So currently, we're not, this ordinance is not contemplated, trying to regulate that. That's something that we can, you can ask that question as part of your recommendations, and that could be referred to the Central Marin Police Department to find out what kind of oversight they may be looking at to, to make that determination.
I'm not asking, saying that we should go and do a research on the whole background of the, of these businesses or the people working for, I'm just saying, as a town, I would like to see us aware of who is coming in, and know, you know, if they have a license, let us know they have a license. And the other thing I wanted to bring up is, I was reading the IJ article about, that quotes from the survey. And, you know, the survey, I'm sorry to say, is kind of useless, because those who participated did it by choice, and that's not the way to take a survey when you want information. I mean, I've worked for, you know, state legislators, I was an elected official myself, and when you want information, you either hire a professional firm, you help write your questions, and they'll make the phone calls and do it, and if the town doesn't want to spend that money, we have a wonderful asset in this county, the League of Women Voters. For the past twenty-five or more years, they have performed this for different public entities. They will work with you, do the survey, they will do the calling, and they don't ask to be paid, but they do ask for you, it's your choice, at the amount you wish to do, to make a donation to the League of Women Voters. And I would hope in the future, when these type of things come up, we do, do a survey, because, you know, people have their own agenda, going to enter the survey, people who because, you know, people have their own agenda going into the survey, people who may not be affected directly are not going to, so as I say, unfortunately, it means nothing. It's not like the workshops where people are able to talk and ask questions and back and forth. So those were my two things.
I made that comment to the reporter. Beyond that.
One more thing, just to be aware, and Phil, you said you would talk to it, over the weekend, I sent to staff and to Peter that CVS is hoping, or they're planning, but I think it's more hope, to sell CBD products in 800 stores in eight states, and California is one of them. And this is from NBC News, this isn't from some strange website, and they're talking about, I'm very ignorant when it comes to this, so I could probably say the wrong thing. It's more than ointments, it's compounds. Anyway, I sent it to staff and. Oh, well, that's.
No, I'm sorry, you can speak later, but.
I would hope, Phil, that you could speak to it and how it affects our ordinance.
So with that said, two things, Phyllis, we did have a discussion, as I recall, my memory could be wrong, about the outside delivery services, and we cannot, there is probably a registry, but we cannot say, you cannot come into the town of Corder Madera and deliver marijuana if you don't have a sign on your car or you're not registered in the town in some way. So they can come and go without any issues, and I think there was some embedment in the state law about that fact that they're free to do that, that we can't regulate that. I think there was something about that at the time.
That may be in the state law, you know, regulating, I just thought we could have a list of companies that intend to.
The town could endeavor to get that list and do whatever they wish with it. I think when it comes to your comment about CVS is that this ban would essentially make that not possible for them to sell.
Yeah, 'cause I figure if CVS is gonna do it right, Aide will follow.
But I'll let Phil address this, because he's got the information. So, Mr. Boyle, would you please?
Yes, there are, so there are products that are created using CBD, and that is material coming from the hemp plant. And currently, we have beauty stores that sell products, lotions and various things that contain CBDs. And they're clearly not, they have no hallucinogenic effect, they are not designed to be consumed orally, they're designed to are topical products. Our ordinance here specifically defines cannabis and specifically says that cannabis or cannabis products does not mean industrial hemp as defined by the Health and Safety Code. And again, the CBD products are derived, or product is derived from the hemp plant. So our, this ordinance will not, does not, will not affect the sale or distribution of CBD topical products at this point.
I'm gonna just add to that, there are, the CBD as described, what Phil's relying on is, based on the article that Commissioner Metcalf provided, is CVS specifically described it as hemp-based plant. Just for clarification, as many of the members of the community may know, is there are CBD oil products that are extracted from a cannabis-related plant that isn't, according to the article, what is being contemplated by CVS, and that's certainly subject to state oversight and not local oversight. The other thing, as Mr. Boyle pointed out, is as cannabis is proposed to be defined in the draft ordinance, which is certainly up for discussion, is the cannabis, and again, it's on page 13 of the draft ordinance in your staff report, specifically excludes, cannabis does not include the mature stalks of the plant, the fiber produced from the stalks, the oil or cake made from the seeds of the plant, or any compound manufactured, salt derivative mixture preparation of the mature stalk, fiber, oil, or cake, or the sterilized seed of the plant which is incapable of germination. So by the proposed regulation that's before you tonight, and you're making recommendation to the council, and then would be considered by the council prior to any approval, any of the oil-based products that don't have the THC would be exempt from any of our ordinances, and the town wouldn't be regulating that, as proposed and certainly directed by the council, and that's certainly up for your recommendation tonight.
Peter.
And we're not actually aware of any other local jurisdiction attempting to regulate these types of products.
My only question would be, has the state resolved its regulation of this hemp category?
I'm not aware if they have. There are numerous, I'm just aware there are numerous products that are for sale on the market, hemp, t-shirts and fibers and that type of thing.
Right, okay, no, there's, I read some background on this.
In reading through this, Peter, and also for Judith, there is one product that the FDA approved, Epidiolex, which is an oral solution prescribed for the treatment of seizures. Now, since if it's FDA-approved, would that mean it would be okay if the pharmacy wanted to sell it? It's, it's one of those CBDs, as I say, I, I'm. I'm not as aware as you are of all of these things, but it is part, it says the others are in the gray area and they're being checked, but this is the only one that has been approved by the FDA.
So if you wanted to pass along your recommendations to council that they consider these issues either as part of the regulation, and then council can direct staff as to how they want to proceed in this, but we're certainly have not done any independent research between the time that you provided that to Mr. Boyle in this evening about, again, the council didn't direct any or contemplated staff returning with any regulation concerning any other product or byproduct other than the actual cannabis.
So if we, if it's not in this ordinance and it's not being regulated by the town, then if Rite Aid chose to sell these oils, it would be okay?
Well, it wouldn't be our determination whether that would be okay, that would be up to the state or the feds, but the town of Corder Madera wouldn't be, doesn't currently regulate anything that may be sold in retail existing where it's not the main product. I mean, it's not a cannabis-related dispensary or business or retail store of any kind, but where there may be products for an existing retailer, whether it is a drugstore or a spa or a beauty supply products or whatnot. The town hasn't looked into regulating those types of products at this time. And certainly, if that's something that is of question or concern to the commission, you could pass those, that on to the council for their consideration.
Gotcha.
Okay. Over on this side of the dais, Mr. Lee.
So is this commentary or is this questions?
No, this is questions for staff, right, that's where we are.
Okay, so I have no questions.
Okay. Ms. Margaret Mandel.
So, is there any inclusion or exclusion of selling cannabis, edible cannabis products?
Yes, the selling of edible cannabis products is not allowed in the town of Corder Madera per this, if this ordinance is passed. That is considered a cannabis-related business.
And would that be also included in restaurants?
Yes.
They can't bake with it, right.
You never know. No brownies.
All right, so I don't particularly have any questions at this point, I think I understand the difference between, with this new federal regulation of hemp not being a Class I drug anymore, that it's now allowed, the farm bill allowed it to be turned into products, I believe. So that's the federal law. State hasn't filtered all of this through yet, as I understand it, but maybe I'll be educated by some of the members of the public here, among other things. So with that said, do you have anything else you want to add to this before we open up to public hearing?
Yep. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. So I think there's a few people who would like to speak here, so we're gonna ask you to hold your commentary to three minutes, we're gonna time you, and if you make sure you speak into the microphone well so that you get on record, that would be appreciated. So please step up, and if you are able to identify yourself, that would be great. So please start out. Who's gonna start?
I'll be glad to start. My name is David Bramnick, and I am a resident in Corder Madera. Just happened that I posted a comment on Nextdoor a few weeks ago about the cannabis issue, and I received approximately 100 responses, both in thanks and probably 45 to 50 comments. Most of the, pretty much, close to the level of your survey. You know, I'd like to just say that this is a sticky problem, and, you know, I appreciate you guys for taking this on. It seems way over your skis to be in this area, and you're forced to kind of deal with it. I would like to say, though, that it's also a political problem, and that the way you're adjudicating this is gonna have a lot of effect on a lot of people who live in a community of 9,800 people. When you go by using data that comes from a ridiculous survey of 400 people that were, and also two sessions of 40 people, you're really not representing the will of the community. I understand this as being fast-tracked because you have a deadline in September, but I would also like to say that when 70% of Marin voters support this issue, it's really up to your group that is being put in a difficult position to make right decisions. You know, I was, I watched the actual city council meeting with you presenting your particularly personal views on this issue, and I was struck by that. I thought it was way out of place, I thought as you head of this commission, you had no business having a political point of view on this, and just like this woman here, you should probably recuse yourself from any further discussions here based on the fact that you have a horse in the game, you have an opinion. And I think your job as a council should be doing the best thing for a community, not for what your personal beliefs are. You know, I don't mean to offend you, but I was struck by that, and I thought that was way out of place. I think that the selling of opioids, selling of liquor, the selling of tobacco within the city limits, I think the city council, remember there's a liquor store across the street, is being regulated by no one. And the fact that you're taking the voice of the people of California and this county and turning it into an issue where you have railroaded through a piece of legislation that's going into the city council is rather shocking to me. I would also just like to say that this reefer madness concept of the kids going all crazy and smoking reefer because there would be a potential cannabis facility with a guard not letting anybody in underage buying the cannabis is ridiculous. I think you need to absolutely put in a medical marijuana facility in this town so that people who aren't familiar with online can handle that. I'd like to finish, please. I would also like to say. Yeah, let me finish. Who's saying no? Who are you, please? So listen, this is a, this is a politically charged and a lightning rod in the community, and you guys have been operating behind closed doors with a couple of, you should send an email to every member of the community when you're making a legislation based on something as important as this that has been voted on by the community. And I would just like to recommend you rethink this before you send it back to the city council, 'cause I listened to them also, and they were absolutely uninformed like you are. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Peter, may I say something?
No, not now.
I wanna defend you.
Thank you, we can't do that, let's just go.
Hi. My name is Linda Hen, I'm a resident of Kentfield, a parent, and I work to reduce underage alcohol and drug use in our communities for the Coalition Connection. I care about Corder Madera and I care about our youth. I shop, dine, do business in Corder Madera. And I'm concerned about the presence of a retail location and/or outdoor cultivation. I feel this will further decrease the perception of harm to youth and increase access and normalization. I appreciate and I thank you for taking the time and researching the topic of cannabis legalization to figure out what is best for Corder Madera. Though many people voted for legalization, we really don't know what they voted for. We don't know if they voted for decriminalization, removing the stigma, we don't know what they want, and we don't want to take a chance in Corder Madera. Currently, no other Marin town offers retail storefronts, and there's a reason for that. Most towns are taking a wait-and-see attitude. They're waiting because they know that once they allow brick-and-mortar stores, it will change their town, and they're not willing to risk this for their citizens. I do feel that retail locations and outdoor cultivation will impact Corder Madera negatively and alter the culture. We don't know to what extent, and that's just the problem, we don't know a lot. We don't, we do know that outdoor cultivation will increase crime, access, theft, and not to mention the pesticides and what it does to the environment. The accessibility and nuisance has a negative impact on community members, not just those growing it. Marin County has one of the highest rates of teen cannabis use in the country, and so.
I just noticed that.
And Southern Marin is even higher, I won't take up as much time as you did. Marin County has one of the highest rates, they do not perceive it to be harmful. We are working diligently with the schools, law enforcement, public health officers to reduce trends that are harmful. The more the towns can do to help obscure the normalization of cannabis, the better it is for the youth and the efforts we are working on. It is an uphill battle, and we need your help. When this becomes legal federally, which I think it should, we will have systems in place for proper testing of the products. The products that are out there today are crazy. They don't monitor them, they don't test them, and the, and they're all, and the youth right now are using a device called PAX, and it's all the concentrates, which has THC levels up to 90%. Like I said, when this becomes legal federally, we will have systems in place for proper testing to protect consumers. We need to wait for this to occur for many reasons, including changing from an all-cash business to have tests and research on products and setting up taxation and regulation to protect towns and give them the tax revenue they are due. This process has been much more daunting than the state of California anticipated. The revenue is considerably less than the state projected, they have altered their outlook. It is not rolling out as originally planned. The state is grappling with how to handle this safely. This is a work in progress, and now is not the time to test it in Corder Madera. The state shouldn't be handling this, the county shouldn't be handling, and each individual town should not be handling this. The bottom line is we are not ready for retail storefronts or outdoor cultivation. We may be, but not yet.
Thank you, very much, okay. Next, please.
Hi.
Hello. My name is Chris Wellish, and I'm a resident of Larkspur, but I've been a resident of Corder Madera and probably will be again. I was recently forced to retire as I was diagnosed with early onset Alzheimer's three years ago at 57, and to combat some of the early symptoms of the disease such as anxiety and insomnia, I use cannabis. It's the only thing which helps with these symptoms and helps me feel normal. I was grateful to be able to vote to make cannabis legal in California because it was very important to me, but I find it very disappointing at the lack of education this council appears to have, and for those who are trying to keep access to medical dispensaries out of the reach of people like me and even in my own hometown. I feel like you all represent me and many of us voters, and we voted it in, but it still feels like it has so much fear and misunderstanding around it. I've learned a lot about it in the past few years while looking for things that would be better for me than taking pharmaceuticals, and I've learned so much, and I feel so different. And I'm not addicted to anything, but I feel more normal. There's so many things about it that. There's so many things about it that help, that aren't just bad about a kid in the corner with a PAX. You know, you could buy a PAX on Amazon, okay? It's not your dispensary down the street. I've been to dispensaries all over the Bay Area to try to learn, and they're all really tightly woven. You can't, I've been hanging around all those, and you, I never see a kid get near that. But I've heard kids talk about the fact that the people who drive in pot, all you have to do is call the place. So, you can actually call outside Pete's, or you can call the pizza place. You can call it in anywhere you want it to be. It's not really a big concern about whose house it goes to and who it is that's delivering it. So, I find that some of that concern about what it is, where it comes from, and who's it's going to, you know, where other municipalities have it working, it's working. So, I, even the kid thing, I mean, I understand being concerned about a kid, but that's the parents taking care of that issue to educate their family and their children. So, I would ask you, because I'm currently have to drive all over hell and back to get what I need, and someday soon I won't be able to drive, is how's I, how am I supposed to get what I need when I voted it in? So, I ask you, please, to vote to allow a dispensary in Corder Madera. And if you can't do it, please educate yourself more about it.
Thank you, Chris.
My name's Emily Tajani. I'm a resident of Corder Madera. I also am a physician specializing in adolescent and adult addiction and mental health disorders. I have a medical practice here in Corder Madera. I'm also on faculty at UCSF. And I want to just try to speak very specifically to the issues pertinent to the purpose of this meeting, which is the town ordinance and the question around storefronts, allowing storefronts and outdoor grow. I am opposed to both storefronts and outdoor grow in our town, and I'll list in the next minute or two the reasons why I am. These reasons stem from what's a really pretty impartial and very extensive and replicated academic literature base that leaves us with no doubt that marijuana use does carry potential for harm and potential for great harm, particularly with teenagers, due to the risk of addiction, the much greater risk of addiction with early onset cannabis use, and the risk for negative mental health outcomes, particularly increased risk of depression, suicide, and psychosis with heavy marijuana use and early onset marijuana use. While there's not yet a lot of data on how cannabis storefronts and legalization have impacted teen use, because it's just too early to tell, the changes haven't been there long enough, there is data that increased access to marijuana advertisements and exposure such as through parental use or family members' use leads to an increased likelihood of use amongst young people and more positive expectations of what comes with marijuana use. And this is kind of similar to what we've seen in the past with tobacco, and this has luckily changed over the decades as tighter and tighter regulations have been placed. There's also a reason that marijuana is still, or, sorry, alcohol is still the most commonly used drug amongst young people and adults. It's available, and it's widely accepted. It's still more commonly used than marijuana. Data over the past few years have shown pretty steady rates of marijuana use amongst teens, even in states with legalization, so use hasn't changed much one way or another. If you look back, though, over several decades at the longer-term trends from the 70s or even the early 90s, what we see is that marijuana use has steadily increased amongst teenagers and young adults, whereas alcohol and every other illicit drug of abuse, rates of use have declined, sometimes quite markedly. Alcohol use has declined from about 70% of teens using in the past year to about 40%, whereas marijuana has increased from about 20 to 30% over the past three decades. Lastly, I just want to say that while not all people who use marijuana experience problems, many experience, very few, some will experience extreme impairment, and particularly are young people who start using. And unfortunately, I don't think we're doing enough as a society to properly inform and protect people of these risks and the financial, I think that's largely due to the financial gains to be had, and as a town, we need to think about the financial cost to increase mental health and addiction costs in our community with increased access.
Thank you, Emily. I appreciate that. Yes, all right. Next, please.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jeremiah Mock. I'm a resident of Corder Madera and the father of two teenage sons. I'm also a researcher at the University of California in San Francisco, and I specialize in public health and in particular in tobacco control. I wanted to share with you tonight, just to reiterate the comments that I made to you through email. I'm a member of the community group called the Coalition Connection, which is a group of concerned citizens and youth and professionals from a wide range here in the Corder Madera, Larkspur, and San Somo area. I appreciate the difficult position you're in. In fact, I think that the legislation was written particularly to impose difficult decisions on planning commissions, often who don't have expertise in the field of public health, and this is first and foremost a public health issue. So, I empathize with the difficulties you face. Let's just deal with some real facts. So, in 2018, Tempe's Union District High Schools had 22% of eighth graders who reported current cannabis use, 40% of 11th graders that reported current cannabis use, and 79% of students in alternative high schools that had reported current cannabis use. These rates are alarming. They're amongst the highest in the nation that we're aware of. So, we have a very serious problem here, and it's difficult to weigh and balance the needs of people who legitimately should have access to medicinal cannabis, and if now the state has made it mandatory to allow deliveries from outside to come in, so that should address that problem. The studies are well-established that one in 10 young cannabis users will become addicted. These are well-established facts, and the issues now are primarily about the emerging market of high potency cannabis products. So, when I say high potency cannabis products, I'm talking about anything over 10% THC content. A study that was just published on March 19th, one of the largest studies in the world done in 11 cities around the world, determined that those who use high potency THC products are more than five times more likely to experience first-episode psychosis. And they estimate that if high potency THC products are eliminated from marketplace in a city like Amsterdam, that they can cut the first-time psychosis rates by 50%. And that's among adults, not among young people who are even more likely to develop psychotic episodes. So, this is not about reefer madness. This is about emerging science.
I neglected to start the clock on time, so...
I'll wrap it up.
Thank you.
So, that's the reason that we're concerned about storefronts and local deliveries. The second point is about outdoor growing. Communities all across the United States that have legalized marijuana and outdoor growing are facing conflict because of the odor that marijuana plants give off, which is often known as skunk, that does not respect property lines, and it's a significant problem. I come from Nevada County. I moved out of Nevada County to Corder Madera because it's become such a serious issue. The exposure of kids and family members and the conflict within neighborhoods across the county is very serious. So, I want you to understand that this is not just a case where we can define a border and say you can keep your six plants that can be worth up to $6,000 per plant, you know, to keep the odor out of other people's neighborhoods and also to eliminate the possibility of theft.
Thank you very much, Jeremiah. Sorry. Been too long. Who's next, please?
My name's Henriette. I'm a local resident in Corder Madera. I recently grew concerned by the town council's proposal to permanently ban dispensaries. To this day, Corder Madera is the only Marin town to explicitly propose a permanent ban on dispensaries. A dispensary ban is a regressive proposal that restricts the community from accessing a safer and healthier alternative to alcohol and prescription drugs. Many people substitute alcohol and opiates with cannabis because it has benign side effects and is impossible to overdose on. 88,000 people die per year from alcohol-related causes in America. Over 47,000 people die per year from opiate overdoses in America. Zero recorded cases of overdose deaths from cannabis in America and in the world. The progressive harm reduction approach would be to offer a dispensary in town that serves recreational and medicinal cannabis for those 21 and older. A medicinal-only dispensary would limit community access. More so, it would severely restrict the potential hundreds of thousands of dollars of cannabis tax revenue per year. Obtaining a medicinal card is a barrier to entry for most folks seeking to buy cannabis at a store. Moreover, a lot of folks will technically purchase recreational cannabis but will use it medicinally. Cannabis improves the quality of life for many who are in pain and suffer from an assortment of afflictions such as inflammation, anxiety, depression, arthritis, PTSD, insomnia, cancer, seizures, et cetera. Denying the community access to a legal storefront cannabis store sends a clear message that you do not believe in harm reduction and safe alternatives. Rather, it sends a message that you'd prefer your populace to stick to drinking and opiates to numb their pain. Let us not forget the double standard that Corder Madera has over 20 alcohol-serving establishments in town with not one dispensary present. The facts on the matter may be inconvenient, but they'll remind us of the hypocrisies present in our community. I understand that we should normalize only for people who are 21 and older, and we should treat it no differently than how we treat alcohol in terms of regulations. Corder Madera has a troubled history with its first dispensary a few years back. We should not let a previous sour business encounter dictate the future for a town of over 9,000 people. Currently, we are allowing precious tax revenue to escape out of our town by only permitting outside businesses and deliveries to operate. We should advocate that any future dispensary in town will need to be fully transparent and adherence to all Corder Madera provisions and remain in good standing with its surrounding neighborhood. Town and state rules require dispensary to have tight security, similar to how a bank would operate. In addition, the dispensary should be small and locally owned, not in corporate entity. In addition, we should continue to allow people to grow cannabis outdoors in Corder Madera, as they have legally been doing so for the past 23 years without any significant incident. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right.
Peter, would you please...
I have, I'm just going to say that we have a set of, a code of conduct for a public hearing, and it's not meant to be an applause section for commenters or other, or boos or any of that. So, please, who's next that would like to comment? Anyone?
Hi, Phyllis Galanis. I'm a resident of Corder Madera. I come at this from a lot of different viewpoints, actually. One, I'm a marriage and family therapist, and I have worked with clients with addictive addictions or abuse of substances as well as behavioral. So, I've worked extensively with adolescents, not at this part of my career, but earlier in it. And one of the difficulties was kids who really became addicted to marijuana. It did affect them in school. It affected their performance, and it goes on into adulthood, unfortunately. The THC is a higher content now than it was. Also, the delivery methods are different. If you're using a PAX, it's like using a jewel for, as a nicotine delivery system. That is also leading adolescents into addiction to tobacco as they get older, because if we're not addicted when we're young, 15, 16, to tobacco, we really don't become addicts later on. It does affect the developing brain. So, there's a real desire to minimize or to keep it away from kids who are still in the developing brain area, which supposedly doesn't stop actually until 25. I don't know whether it really does or not, but at any rate, there, that is an issue. Another issue, though, is my own personal one. I use CBD cream. I have really bad back pain, and the CBD cream does help. Is it easy to get? No. I have to go to Fairfax, and they don't have any in stock and haven't for over a month, and they couldn't find a place to actually make it, so I haven't had any for quite a while. So, on a personal level, I'd like to be able to get it. I also was here when we had the unfortunate experience of having a dispensary, well, we had a couple of them in Corder Madera. One of them was near a kid's gym, and the smell was so strong and so bad in the restroom that they went to in that building, that parents were really upset about that and in fact complained to the town council. That one, well, both of them were eventually closed, but that one was especially bad because the smell does, you can't control it, and the kids were being affected by it.
Thank you, Phyllis. Okay. If there's someone else, please step up and speak. Do you mind?
Hi, Chelsea Sandronamo. I am here in support of medical marijuana. I would like to say a few things. They are being regulated now from seed to shelf. That's why there's very little product out there on the market these days that's going forward. I'm here to advocate for medical marijuana. I think you guys should absolutely rewrite this whole thing and consider a medical dispensary and a retail dispensary. There are buffer zones in place to protect children from these retail establishments. Medical marijuana, medical cannabis, I'm sorry, is so important to so many people, and it is such a great alternative to alcohol and opiates and people that are addicted. There is a huge problem in this county especially of over-prescribing. There's doctors over-prescribing for everything. Six months ago, I went into the doctor to complain about some hormonal problems I was having. I left with opiates, Xanax, Lorazepam, muscle relaxants, and something else. I chose not to take any of those. I take CBD. I would be really, really sick today if I were to take, if I took those doctor's orders and took all of those things for my hormonal imbalances, I would have been really, really sick. I'm not. I'm a recovering alcoholic. I haven't had a drink in six years. I use cannabis, and it helped me recover from a really deadly disease that would have killed me. There's a lot of people treating really painful ailments and addictions that they couldn't previously beat with cannabis products. So, I think it's really important that you also let people grow their own medicine under the sun where it's supposed to be grown. That's, that's, that's healthy. That's not, there's no pesticides. People putting, aren't putting pesticides in products that they're going to ingest for their health purposes. Thank you for letting me speak, and I really hope you consider, reconsider everything you've written and allow more medical marijuana as this grows. There's a lot of money to be made. I think we need to protect our children. I have a 20-year-old son. He's studying to be a firefighter. He's had the same job for four years. He's a well-adjusted kid. I did not grow up under the best circumstances in this county, and I'm on top of my game now and feeling healthier than I ever have because of cannabis and THC and CBDs. So, I really appreciate your time and your fair consideration. This is a really serious health crisis. It's a community issue. When people, even with the highest psychoactive pot that people are saying it creates psychosis, when you smoke really strong pot, I'm just going to say this from my own experience, I'm not going out and murdering people. I'm not killing people in a car. I'm remembering what I do. I don't sleep with people who I would not normally sleep with, and I know what I'm doing. I'm here trying to help my community. That's what people that are really about pot and don't, I'm not involved with any other drugs. I don't use any other drugs. I don't use any other pharmaceuticals. Purely cannabis. Purely cannabis, and it helps me, and it helps me to come here and participate in my community and try to help. So, that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophie.
Chelsea.
Chelsea. I'm sorry. Chelsea. Okay, I got that. Right. Next, please.
I'm Carl Spursum. I live in Cordera Madera here for about 30 years, and thanks for all your work you guys are doing on this. This is, this is entertaining if you can kind of consider it that way. I was going through the survey again and the responses, and there was one, a very lengthy one, and one of the questions of the survey, and David, I think, said earlier, there's only one question on the survey-
Quiet, please.
...that had less than 50% positive vote for any manner of sale or processing or anything in the town. So, survey was pretty, sorry. Anyway, so I'm just going to read this because it's better than anything I could write. Marijuana, like many things, can be abused. If it is criminalized or tightly regulated, citizens may be harmed or taken advantage of by those desperate to attain illegal and hard-to-get expensive substances. In 2012, Colorado and Washington became the first states in the United States to legalize cannabis for recreational use. Critics feared it would attract criminal elements and that it would lead to increases in impaired driving incidents and youths being exposed to the drug, while advocates hoped it would lead to an economic boom and an end to the criminalization of cannabis users, which, as California budget people know, didn't happen. This November marks, last November, marked the five-year anniversary of legalization in both states. In that time, a number of studies, surveys, and statistics have been published that provide a view into the range of effects that have been observed since the new policy was implemented. Here are some highlights. A study published by the American Journal of Public Health saw, found in 2014, a 6.5% reduction in deaths resulting from opioid use in Colorado, indicating reversal in previous 14-year increasing trend. A think tank, The Rand Corporation, which I think we should all know about, working for the Washington State Legislature, produced a report showing overall decreases in youth, eighth to 10th graders cannabis use, usage rates. The report was based on a survey data from the State's Department of Health, which pulled the usage among students in ages six, eight, 10, and 12. The results of the survey showed decreased usage by students in all four grade levels. For example, students in their 10th grade responded at a 17% usage rate in 2016. They were 18% in 2006 and 20% in 2010. Similar decreases in teen usage were observed in Colorado with 21.2% reporting usage in 2015, down from 22%, not a lot, but in 2011. Bottom line is something that scares people, want it, and they will do whatever they need to get it. If it's abundant, it's cheap, easy to regulate, there's an opportunity for revenue gathering. I thought that was a pretty good statement. Thanks.
Thank you. Keep in the survey. You want your own comments. All right. All right. Is anybody else going to step up and make a comment on this subject tonight? Please step up and state your name.
Hi, my name is Tom. I'm a resident of Cordera Madera, and I live next to Margaret, and I know she's the district attorney, assistant district DA, so it's like having a, I feel like, like she should recuse herself from, from being on this panel. It's not a, it, it's, I don't think, I'm one of the 70% of people in California that has benefited from marijuana use. I'm 73 years old, and I recently had a very bad biking accident in France. My knee was, everything was ripped apart, and, and the surgeons, they said, you should consider a knee replacement. Well, because everything was just ripped. And I was on crutches when I landed here, and then I started, I was urged by studies from UCSF and Stanford, which are exactly the opposite of what these people have been saying, but, but it all depends on what study you read, but I read the studies, and, and it benefited me. You saw me walk up here. If I hadn't used it, I would be with either knee replacement or, or otherwise. But anyway, I'm, it repaired itself. I really think that, that Cordera Madera is really doing tremendous overreacting on this whole basis, and we should normalize everyone that put this, this, this ordinance, this proposed provision to, to the thing. Marijuana has a lot of medical benefits, and I think a lot of teenagers overstate their use just as they overstate having sex to, to boost themselves with their buddies. It has to do with tremendous exaggeration as a teenager. None of my children smoked marijuana while they were at Redwood. I, I, but I've heard some, some really weird things about, that are, I think they're really being over, over-exaggerated now. So, anyway, I, I really, I really support dispensary, and, and really, I think, Margaret, I think you should recuse yourself from this, from this thing. I support outdoor growing. Why should we use the sun? Why should we pay PG&E and Marin Green Energy to grow something that's beneficial?
Tom, thank you very much. I appreciate your commentary. Who else? Please, step up and get yourself in front of the microphone.
Hi, my name is Janet Cutcliffe. I'm a resident here in Cordera Madera, and I have a question about this because clearly there are many different opinions and, and opinions on all sides. Is it possible when you submit an ordinance to the town council to put something in there to say, we want, you know, we're, we're sending this to you as our recommendation, but we'd like to revisit this in X number of years? We want to put a limit on it and say, in two years, we're going to collect these pieces of data, okay? Whatever it is, how many people plant, plants, how many people, you know, I don't know how to find out the data around delivery. That's, would be pretty challenging. But can we say, we're going to revisit this in three years? And we're not going to put it in place and just let it go. We're going to study it and understand the effects on the community. So, that's a question to you.
Okay.
I don't know if that's answerable or you just take it under advisement.
Right now, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Janet. All right. If there's nobody else that's going to jump up, then I'm going to close this public hearing. So, public comment section of it, so. You have that look on your face, you want to say something, so please do.
I've been biting my tongue all morning. I'm a cancer survivor.
Your name?
Pardon me?
What's your name?
My name is Lynn Murray.
Oh, thank you.
I live on Christmas Tree Hill on Summit. I was diagnosed in 2005 with metastatic breast cancer that went into my liver, and it was very aggressive, and as a result, I did for two years, high-dose chemostem cell transplant, had no hair for 24 months. Can you imagine that, ladies? I was bald. I went from 135 pounds to 92 pounds. Through all this, yes, the nasty horrific chemicals, I was offered marijuana, and I just thought, you know what? I'm dealing with enough garbage and whatever, and I had the support of family and friends. I just chose not to. And I smoked it in college. Don't get me wrong. I'm not a, you know, Suzie Q or whatever you call it, okay? And, long story short, I, I respect the right for people to have the right to smoke marijuana. It's a personal decision, but I personally would not advocate, advocate having own property here in Cordera Madera on Christmas Tree Hill. I would not like to see a dispensary in the town of Cordera Madera and bring commercial, bring that commercial entity here. Our taxes are high enough to support the county or to support the city. Thank you for this privilege. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Who else? Anyone else? Please. If you're going to say something, step up. Otherwise, we're going to close the public comment. All right. So, there we go. 9:15, we're closing public comment. So, we've heard a number of comments of varying degree from everyone. So, Mr. Boyle. So, just to answer the commenter's question, is there any mechanism for the town to reevaluate the ordinance that is inherent in the ordinance or inherent in the town's process?
Yes. Am I saying that the town could specify a time to revisit the ordinance, and, and any part of the municipal code can be brought up for review?
By anyone can bring it.
Certainly, the zoning aspects of it.
Right.
Check me for wrong, town attorney.
A request from a resident to the council for an agenda or to the commission can be brought forth at any time. That's right. So, it's not difficult to reconsider anything. It's not in our hands entirely. It is in the public's hands to bring it to our attention.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think it could be part of any, as the commenter sort of requested, it could be sort of baked into a recommendation from the commission to the council, and the council could also make a non-binding commitment, obviously it's a current council, but to revisit in such, in such a time, obviously that requires resources and plays into other aspects of the functions of the town council, but that's certainly something they could consider.
All right. I thought I would just get that out on the table. Simple thing. So, at this point, I would like to ask commissioners, as a result of hearing public comment, if they have any questions for staff that, before we get into discussion, that you'd want to ask of Mr. Boyle or Ms. Prop or Director Wolf. So, anybody want to ask these guys anything as a result of the comment over here?
No.
Charles? Margaret?
I don't have any.
Okay. All right. So, you know, we have before us what's a pretty clear ordinance. The ordinance does not prohibit the use or the sale of CBD, as I understand it at this point, that that would be an entirely different matter. So, this is simply about the dispensary for THC-related products and THC, marijuana, cannabis, as it's said, sativa plant and so forth.
As, yeah, as specified in the slide, prohibiting cannabis-related businesses.
Right. Okay. Pretty clear right there.
And then, and then talks about specific deliveries, and then we get into the realm of cultivation, personal cultivation.
Okay. So, I will open this up to discussion amongst us here. So, I think that the discussion of the ordinance, if we want to move forward with it, is the most important thing that we want to get out of each of you to say whether you support this or you want to reconsider it or you want to add to it. So, or in a recommendation to the council. So, the recommendation could be, we don't want to do this, we want to bring it back, or provide for some changes, or pass it on as it is. So, I'll start with you, Phyllis, for a moment.
Okay.
I imagine we'll go through a couple of rounds here, so.
I, before I speak to the marijuana issue, there is something I would like to address. Two of you in the audience tonight objected to two different members of the commission from participating. When we are appointed or elected to office, we have responsibilities in those offices, but we do not give up our right as individuals. And we have, as individuals, and as you know, I've spoken before the council several times, Peter has, so have other members, I always make it clear, I am speaking as an individual and not a member of the commission, and commission members should, there are certain reasons why they should recuse themselves, but having an opinion is not one of them. Okay? On marijuana, and you'll find I have lots of opinions, I am probably the only member of the commission who is pro-medical dispensaries, and this goes back to when it first became before the council a couple of years ago when they did the original moratorium. Unfortunately, the use of marijuana is being handled, both the recreational and the medicinal the same. And I think it muddies the waters. I wish they had not passed the state law to make recreational marijuana legal until they had straightened out how to handle medicinal marijuana. I think the use of medicinal marijuana is very important. One of my sons who gave me permission to say this, last year, used it when he had cancer. His wife would drive him straight from Kaiser over in the East Bay to the medicinal marijuana dispensary in Oakland for him to get, and I don't know how he used it. I never even bothered asking him. My sister has used it for years for medicinal reasons. I have friends who have had cancer who have used it. I have friends who have other ailments who have used it. I would not have a problem. The reason I was asking about regulating the deliveries was because I think you could have less control over deliveries than you can over a dispensary that's regulated. And granted, there were two in town who opened up under illegal circumstances and lied to get their business licenses. One I know about that was extremely well-run with the garden, everything else, and it's a shame that it does not exist anymore. I know, the people I know in Marin County who need a dispensary drive up to Petaluma or Katati. But the town of Cordera Madera is not ready to approve a dispensary, and I have to face the fact. And I've listened to all of you, and they say, I would like to see a sunset, a type of sunset clause in the ordinance, which is the legal term for the question that was asked by, I forget which one, one of you, that this will, and actually put into it, this issue will be revisited within two years or three years to see whether or not the ordinance will continue as written. I think that's a good way to do it. At this time, this ordinance is going to pass with limitations. I've been in politics since I was 17 years old, and I'm well aware of what works and what doesn't, and changing it this time is not going to work. So, we have to make the best of it, and I would hope, in the meantime, the state, who seems to dump things on local entities, finds a way to differentiate between how you handle both recreational, the difference in how you handle both recreational and medicinal marijuana. I think that's important, but until that happens, this town is going to have a ban on dispensaries, and that's just how it's going to work.
Thank you very much, Phyllis. I appreciate your thoughts, and you've thought a lot about it.
Oh, I have.
Mr. Lee.
All right. So, thank you for your comments tonight. I think one of the most important ones is that a lot of the comments are about kind of a health issue, right? And, and trying to influence our decision-making and our recommendation as the planning commission based on those decisions. And I want to step back and talk about ways that a planning commission might review this. So, one of the questions I had for staff that I didn't ask openly was, if we ban the businesses, are they going to be able to advertise, right? Because if you go to the East Bay or you go down to, you know, Southern California, every billboard now is that, right? It's marijuana of some sort, some industry's being advertised. How would we feel if that was the Marlboro Man on a horse, right? Like, so, there's already a destigmatization, but it is that already we're not normalizing very many, a lot of readily available commercial-type things like nicotine, right? So, by not allowing a storefront, which if we allowed a storefront, even if it was medicinal, you know, we wouldn't have very much control about how that's presented in the community. And so then, from a planning standpoint, I think of places like Amsterdam or the Netherlands, who's had it open for a very long time, right? And if you go there, it's not like every little hamlet has marijuana bars all over the place, right? It's very concentrated, usually in the red light districts where they allow devices of all of society to be openly acknowledged because they want people to do that, right? But- But many of the more Protestant, like, conservative communities are, and they're not even conservative. They're not, you know, they're open, but they, they, they don't want it in all the different communities. They give access and outlets to it, right? At a commercial level, right? So, that's not medicinal. So, I think that's important to understand as a community. You know, if we were talking about something else, like, you know, strip joints and Broadway Street in San Francisco and whether that was appropriate for the community, I think, you know, it would set a different tone. But at the same time, other communities see it as that. I, I think, you know, specifically about the medicinal, just allowing medicinal, some other medicinal outlets that are regional. If you read the articles, the owners don't think that they can cost-compete against, you know, commercially open, you know, recreational places. And so, they're, they're basing lobbying and saying, if we don't get the recreational license, we can't fiscally make it work. So, even if we did allow it, I don't think you would see it here. And so, by just making a political statement about our understanding of it, I think that, that the majority of the community is more supportive of that, from, from my understanding and reading of it. So, you know, I think ultimately, the planning commission really, this would have been a more useful exercise for us if there were certain ones that were opened up and it was, there was more zoning considerations and stuff, which other communities are going through. But in this one, this is a recommendation from the elected body, right? So, outside of the 70% of the state that voted for it, inside this, we, we have voted officials. We're appointed. We mostly focus on planning commission-related things, right? So, that's how we should be considering these ordinances and the majority of our feedback. But we're also appointed by the council and advisory to them. And, you know, I don't, I don't get a sense from all the dialogue that I've heard from everyone that there's a large appetite to, to change the ordinance. And so, I personally can make, you know, recommend that as it is, the people with medicinal needs or even recreational needs will still have access. We live in a time where if you can't drive, someone can drive it to you. You still have access, right? Like, so, I, I just, okay.
Just please continue.
So, I'm just saying, well, I'm, I'm just saying that I, I think that there still will be access that, you know, whether you can walk or you can call or whatever, that, that the stigma's broken, that you can, you can still have access to it. It's just, you know, the community at large just doesn't seem to currently want to have it in the community. You know, and as an example, in, let, the, the large regional shopping centers have had no interest and no one's actually lobbied them to, to do it. So, even, even within the commercial enterprises, they're not, nor would those regional shopping centers want to support it. So, it's, you know, I think in the past, there was a stigma about the, and, and they wanted to keep it low-profile with the medicinal, so they hid it somewhere. But that, that, that was because of that cultural condition at the time and even medicinal, if it was now, we had, we couldn't really say, we maybe could talk about zones, but if it was in a commercial zone, it could just be anywhere. So, that's why, once again, I, I feel like I can support this, you know. And, and I do represent a large community here. You know, I go to, my kids all go to Neil Cummins. I see a large, vast majority of, of all the student body and their parents, some of which, you know, have their own medicinal or recreational needs. But ultimately, I think that the majority of them also don't want to see this kind of normalized within this community. And it is a very strong children-based community. So, that's why, it, it, you know, it's not just personal. It's, it's a larger body that I represent, but I still have my individual thoughts on it. And so, that's why I can recommend it to the council to proceed as it is.
Thank you, Charles. I've heard you say this at the last meeting and you've been consistent with your thoughts about it. Margaret?
To correct a misunderstanding first, I've spent the last 20 years of my life working at the Department of Child Support Services as an attorney, not the district attorney. And I have spent 20 years making sure that the children in Marin County get what they need. I believe that medical marijuana should be accessible to anybody who needs it. But I don't believe in normalizing it in a community that is child-based. And, and I don't, I don't want to see storefronts or five-and-dimes selling products that are available to children, even on a small, very, very limited basis. The physician who was here had a lot to say that I think is very, very significant. And I appreciate getting the facts about things. And at this point, I think the ordinance, the way it reads, is, is fine.
Okay.
That's what I support.
Good, thank you. I know you have a fair amount of experience with children. So, I come from a place of experiencing a lot of friends who have used marijuana in various forms to alleviate pain and on their way to passing away. And in the past few years, it's become a significant occurrence in my life. I'd say there's probably a person about every three or four months that passes and has used marijuana to deal with the pain. But, so personally, I respect the fact that it has an impact on people that need it. There's no doubt about it. So, why we're, I don't feel we should be bifurcated into being against marijuana here or for it. And yet, that's where this stands or where, what it comes down to. The charge to the commission in our oath of office is about the health and safety of the town of Corder Madera and its inhabitants. So, if someone could prove beyond a reasonable doubt that somehow the omission of the ability to get marijuana down at the corner is a negative health and safety factor for the town, I might consider not supporting this ordinance. But having that dispensary down there would impact the health and safety of the residents, in my opinion and my view. Normalization is a long road. It's going too fast, in my opinion, and that we need to slow it down. There needs to be better data on the products and the impact that it has. So, now that hemp is available for federal testing and any other testing, we're going to find out how many of those cannabinoids can actually work on people. The federal government is not going to be testing THC in any quick manner, but there are entrepreneurs that are finding applicable uses. So, this is a conundrum because I've been up to the Green Triangle. I've talked to a lot of people up there and they're, they're out of business because they can't sell it anymore the way they used to. There are a few people that still do, but the big concerns are taking over. So, Fairfax is just barely getting along because there's nobody else selling medicinal marijuana, as I understand it. Fairfax can't come to an agreement. They've had several hearings and they don't know quite what to do for the town that originated dispensary in Marin County. You know, they're having a hard time figuring out what to do. Sausalito has continued to ban it. I, I believe the county has continued to ban it as well. So, I'm not sure of that. Everybody's in process. So, normalization is, we're not ready for normalizing dispensary in the town right now. It's, the data's not there and we are due to protect our kids and families from that normalization. We've heard from the, the kids at the high school about how easy it is to get and normalization just enhances that. I have read hundreds of pages of the impact of marijuana on kids 12 to 25, and it is significant. If it's not, it's just significant on the brain, no matter how you go about it. And there's a good, to the doctor's comments, the impact that it has in terms of addiction is, I've read that statistic any number of places, 10% becoming addicted and socialization is a problem. So, having it normalized is just not where we need to go right now. Corder Madera should not be the petri dish for figuring this out. It should be examined by the federal studies to figure out what the content is and how it affects the brain. And these things need to be first and foremost in everybody's mind as to how it impacts the lives of their kids. And we're not there. That's just the way it is. So, you know, the gentleman inferred that somehow I was uneducated. I will tell you, as I've said, I've read hundreds of pages of information about this. And I've experienced a lot of people. I have friends that are in the business and I support them and I support their efforts. But I do not support a dispensary right here in this town, especially when it seems like we can get it within 30 minutes and it's not a problem. But you have to be an adult and you got to go outside of town. And that's important. So, that said, I think we're all on the same page as to approving this resolution to recommend approval to the town council. The only question would be whether we want to put in a sunset clause. Is it, does that strike you guys as something that we want to add to this?
I don't understand how it would.
Yeah, how's that any different than if the town just decides that they want to revisit it because we better understand it in a few years and they just elect to revisit? I mean, they do that with ordinance all the time, whether it's sunset it or not. So, I just don't know that it's necessary. It just puts an additional clause on it. That's my personal view.
I would like to see the clause written in there because I don't want to have to wait until somebody starts complaining. I want us as a commission, I want the town government to say, this is where we stand today. We are open to revisiting it in three years to see what changes may be made. Revisiting in three years doesn't mean you're changing the ordinance. It means you're looking at the facts and the data that's behind the decision you made.
All right.
Priorly. So, that's why I would like this sunset clause in to revisit.
So, that would mean that staff would then take it upon themselves to create a study, much like you've done now, if we said revisit this. It would have to go through that kind of process again, where you examine the current conditions, the current set of laws in the neighboring communities, and we take another pulse.
It would be, in my opinion, it would be a subject to, you know, the discretion of the council and the commissioner and how, how you want the ordinance to be revisited and say you want it revisited two years from now. How do you want us to do that? Let's do a similar survey or different survey. It will also depend on staff resources at that time and other priorities. And so, if you want it done, you know, two years from now, we don't know what the, you know, what the.
I think, go ahead.
Peter, another reason why I think it should be in our, the ordinance or recommendation on the ordinance is if we wait for a member of the public to come and ask for something to be on an agenda, you have a certain amount of time in which to get it on the agenda. This way, if it's part of the ordinance, town staff knows this is something that you keep an eye on and can be working on it. You don't make decisions within three or four weeks. You know, you shouldn't be expected to make decisions in three or four weeks. Let me put it that way. And why I think it should be stated within the ordinance, whether it's two years, as Phil said, or three years, as I said, I mean, it would be up to the council to decide what the time span would be. But I think everybody should be on notice that this will be looked at again. This is where we stand today. We will look in the future to see if this is where we still stand.
What would be your recommendation for a timeframe if you were to do that?
She's going 10 years. I know, I'm having fun.
Yeah, I am asking Phyllis, yeah.
My recommendation? I was going by, Phil said two years. I said three.
Right.
I, Phil knows he's going to be doing the work. What does he feel most comfortable about? Being able to get the type of information you need? Doing a proper survey this time? A survey that means something this next time, et cetera? Can you do it in two years? Do you need three years? What do you need? You're doing the work. I'm just saying what I'd like to say.
Let's see, let's clarify this. So, all we would be doing is saying that the town should create a revision to the ordinance in a, in a specific time period or within a timeframe.
To readdress it, not to necessarily revise it. They may find nothing's changed.
So, Charles, you were saying?
Oh, I was, I was just saying that, you know, ultimately, we're just making recommendations to the council. So, the council should define how many years that they want to do that. So, we could just say, you know, please think about how many years you want to let this simmer, so.
Well, my personal recommendation would be a five-year.
Right, but we're a body of four and we can't agree. So, do you, you know, do you want to sit here for an hour and figure it out?
No. Okay, so, we can, would you agree that they, we can say that they decide to? We would ask that they revisit the issue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Say it's important enough to revisit.
And that they can put it?
What is Charles's objection to having it written into the ordinance?
What, I don't have an objection to the council hearing a recommendation to think about re-investigating how it's progressing as a regional or state-level, you know, thing in a couple of years. That's a recommendation to them, but ultimately, I, I don't, I don't think we're rewriting the ordinance. We're just telling the council, consider this.
It is simply a recommendation. So, we would, we would add that to the resolution if we wanted to.
And I'm happy to vote for that. But, you know, I don't want to go beyond that.
That's fine. I just want to be sure it didn't get lost in just conversation.
All right.
You know, while we're waiting, while they're talking, I, a little personal thing, probably the best way to handle teenagers using marijuana is the way my oldest son handled my youngest son when he was in the eighth grade and wanted to try it. And Kevin just told Ryan, you're a jock. You know how you love sports. You try it, I'm going to break both of your legs and you're never going to play sports again. And believe me, Ryan never had marijuana again until he had cancer last year.
There are state requirements for athletic testing, so, any case.
We're just saying, as we're waiting, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out and expressing your opinions. I know there's a lot of decisions in both directions, but I just want you all to know ultimately that everyone was heard. And again, I think that that's important and it, it makes our decision-making processes better by having the entire public participate and feel like they can participate, you know, so.
Thank you, Charles. That's good. I agree. I agree that it's important to hear from everybody.
There isn't a motion in here, is there? We have a motion?
Yeah.
So, you want the, the resolution itself read, not?
No, there's a resolution here.
A text or one.
Then where would we add into?
We'd just say.
All right, but where do we add into this?
It, they would write it in and.
Well, I'd like to see us add it in as we do the resolution.
So, it's a whereas, I suppose, or?
If you just make the motion to adopt the resolution and to make a recommendation to council that they include language in any kind of a final ordinance, then staff will take a look at this between now and the time that this matter returns to council and insert that language based on your recommendation. And so, it's not critical to the process tonight to actually, again, figure out where in the ordinances it would go. It'd be just a recommendation of the council.
I'm not talking about rewriting the ordinance right now. I am talking about, I want it stated in the resolution that we have this recommendation.
Yes, we can add that as part of your motion.
Where would we add it?
We, we will figure that out, but it would probably be toward the end of the resolution before you say pass it or adopt it.
Now therefore be hit resolved.
Somewhere there, yeah, somewhere there likely, but we'll, we'll figure that out.
I just want to be sure it doesn't get lost.
It won't, not at this point. Okay, so, you would like the element of reconsideration added. So, I'd like you to make the motion, please.
Oh, great. Do I have to read the whole thing? Oh, great, do I have to read the whole thing?
Read the title of it, the resolution.
All right. I move that the Corder Madera Planning Commission forwards Resolution Number 19-014 to the Town Council, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town of Corder Madera recommending the council adopt ordinance and ordinance amending titles six Health and Sanitation, I think that's supposed to be Title IX?
Yes.
Title IX, Peace, Safety, and Morals, and Title 18, Zoning of the Corder Madera Municipal Code Regarding Cannabis Regulations with the Following Recommendation, to add on to the ordinance, a clause to say it will be revisited within three years to see if it shall continue as current, as currently adopted. Is that okay?
All right, they can consider it. Do we have a second on that?
A second.
Okay, thank you, Margaret.
Okay, Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Beddell?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Kaff?
Aye.
Chairman Chase?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, thank you, everyone.
We were supposed to do something at 9:30 or 10:00.
Who amongst us went to last week's?
I did.
Council?
Yes. I did.
Margaret and I switched places, I have to go to the annual meeting of my HOA.
So, Margaret?
So there were two, two of bigger issues that came up. One had to do with the implementation, which this will be implemented starting in January 1st, 2020, the tobacco retailer licensing program, which prohibits the sale of flavored tobacco products, and prohibits pharmacies from engaging in tobacco retailing. So there was a discussion about that and how it related to Corder Madera. And then, by far, the most popular subject that came up was Mario, the town rec and...
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Recreation leader, talked about allowing a piece of town park to be open for a dog run, basically, a dog park. And so that, after doing a lot of research about where an appropriate dog park could be located, they came up with the idea that just a piece of the town park should be sort of cordoned off for owners to bring dogs there to run. And then, that led to a number of people saying that they didn't feel that enough energy had been put into locating a dog park in Corder Madera, wants a dedicated dog park, and everybody on the council basically agreed that Corder Madera needs a dedicated dog park. Part of the others, discussion that came up was dog walkers, and as it turns out, I didn't know this, you need a business license to be a dog walker, and, let's see, you need a business license if you're going to, even if you have five or less dogs to walk. That was it.
So I thought I read, can you clarify, they also, when they talked about town parks, it's that dogs are now allowed to go on leash, so was that discussed?
Only if on leash.
Right, that, it was just, it was discussed, the part of it that was discussed was that the dogs off-leash would be in a certain area of it.
Right, so that was reopening the discussion about having a dog park at any location, right, or just how that would function, but then, part of it also, I thought, I understood, was that currently, there's a ban on dogs in all town parks, and now they can go in the parks, but on leash.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, okay. Sounds like a hot-button issue.
It was a very hot-button issue, and I didn't bring up the fact that I thought there should be a cat park, too. But I just.
Well, there's a levee, and then there's a marsh, nevermind. So there, is that really the substance then of the important stuff that took place at the?
Yeah, that was, that was the substance. It was a very, it was about an hour meeting, it was not a short, not a long meeting at all. I was happy about it.
Dogs are a, who brought this issue to the forefront, if I'm, was that a parent? Who brought it up, or?
Of the dog park?
Yeah.
Actually, it was Mayor of Ossio.
Because of Pat, this is a big issue.
Who said, after everyone had just sort of settled on this idea that piece of the, no, no, I, you know, there needs to be a dog park, and then everybody else basically let a dog chime in.
Okay, just curious, all right, how it got started, thank you very much. Dr. Director.
Dr. Director.
Hey, Mr., it's Dr. Bundy, he's not here, well. I just wanted to give you a couple of quick updates on the next Tuesday evening, the town council will be hearing the Preserve, the Residences at Preserve project, and so that will undoubtedly be a, you know, a thorough discussion, as it was at the, at the commission. The State of the Town is next Wednesday, at the Corder Madera Inn is the usual location, so just a heads up on that.
Is that the chamber?
What is that?
That's the chamber, the chamber holds every, every year, sort of a, an event that's open to the public with a small donation, I gather, for what's called the State of the Town, where there are sort of.
It's called what?
State of the Town.
Okay.
Just for updates provided by department heads, and the town manager, and the mayor will speak, and just give a little bit of a rundown on activities and things going on, but it's always encouraged for members of the public to attend, if you're interested in those things. And beyond that, a couple of updates, we are looking at the final, shortly here, the final approvals for, on the building permits for the Casa Buena Town Homes, that will be coming up very shortly here, so those will start, you'll start to see those being marketed and selling to new homeowners in town. That's the 16-unit town home project, and then also next week, we're expecting the, I think I mentioned this last time, but expecting that the Denny's will, former Denny's will start to be demolished by next Wednesday or Thursday, so a couple of just updates for you there, and that's, that's all I have at the moment, or clearly busy time, but.
Yeah.
All right, well, I can mention, I think you are aware, through some of the correspondence that you were copied on, there was no appeal filed for, on the 78 Granada application, so it appears that those decisions from the commission will be, were effective in that regard, so no appeals there, and we are still searching for the next available date for the appeal at the town council for the 360 Corder Madera Avenue, but it has not been scheduled at this time.
Okay, those are all good things, and that'll, that's, well, what else is on the town council? That's going to be a long meeting for the council, possibly. Yeah, okay.
Are you going to be there? It's my turn now to be there, yeah. Margaret and I had to switch, because I had a meeting last week.
Okay, so the final thing on our agenda tonight is the approval of the meeting minutes for February 26, 2019, and that was the hearing for the Residences at Preserve, and.
I'll move the minutes of February 26.
I wasn't present, so I won't.
Right. Margaret, do you have any commentary, or do you, will you move to approve?
Uh, no.
You won't move to approve?
Oh.
She needs to.
I don't think I was here for that.
Oh, we've got a problem, because it was just Bob, Peter, and me, and Bob isn't here tonight.
Yeah, that's right.
But if everybody's reviewed the, you know, the proceedings, and some of you do that on a regular basis, you can certainly participate.
I watched the video.
I was here.
So the two, two of us.
Well, if the two of us vote that, is approval?
Majority of those present, all of them.
Is approval a majority of the whole, or a majority of those who were present that night?
Well, it's, the majority, on a motion tonight, it would be the majority of those that are present right now. And then the question is, is everybody qualified to participate, and if any of the other commissioners who may or may not have been there just for absences, not recusals, you know, have reviewed the proceedings and have reviewed the minutes and believe that it accurately reflects what occurred, then they can participate tonight in that vote.
That would be two of us saying yes.
Yes.
That'll, acceptable.
Okay.
And then, what would be the other?
They were not present.
But she has reviewed it.
But Margaret watched it.
Right, so she could, and then Commissioner Lee then could abstain.
Why don't we just wait until next time and just keep it clean?
Oh, it's, okay.
Ultimately, these two, and it's Bob, and.
We'll wait till next week.
We'll wait till next time.
Thank you.
All right.
Then.
Did you move a adjournment?
Well, I did, all right. I was trying to get approved minutes for the council discussion, but that's, it's okay, if we don't have them, we don't, we can't do.
Can't you show them as just draft minutes?
I could.
Yeah, you just show it as draft.
Draft, but.
Can you give your recommendation that you think at this point that they're okay?
I want to have commentary.
Peter and I like the minutes.
It's okay, we'll do draft minutes for the council.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.